I don't, I don't think I would have.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order. Today, we're going through another budget workshop and special meeting as there may be potential action on a budget amendment for this year's budget. And so I'm gonna call to order and I'm gonna turn it over to Ellen Lorraine to talk us through Part B first, which is, as I mentioned, a presentation, possible action on amendment to full year 2025 budget.
Okay. So everyone should have the draft budget for FY26. For ease of explanation and less papers to shuffle, I tried to incorporate the budget amendment for FY25 in the same document as the draft budget for FY26. I did do a summary sheet, so you'll have a smaller that references the page number, the account number, and then the two funds that we're looking at, making amendments in. So the first one is going to be in the general fund. And the city received a grant award from the state for improvements to the Fisher Martin House of $150,000. The city's match for this is $30,000. And so the amendment to the general fund budget is to show the funding of $150,000 in revenue, to show the offsetting $150,000 expense and grant expense, as well as a $30,000 match, city match. So the amendment to the general fund is to increase revenues 180,000 and increase expenses by 180,000. And all that would be for the Fisher Martin House improvements. The second amendment would be in the 1 and 1/2% transfer tax fund. And I believe at our last budget, it was suggested, do we want to pay the amount of money that was pledged already for the Fourth Street Preserve project, which is $750,000, since there will likely be a surplus in this fund for FY25? This amendment is paying the full 750 in FY25. It could be the full 750, or it could be any portion from 0 to 750, depending upon council's decision. But I just reflected the full 750 for FY25, both as a draw on prior year reserves and an expense. At the end of January, if you look in your report, the end of January, there's a surplus of $1 million.
A little confused on the online 26, though, because it looked like adopted budget. There was 500, and then the column is labeled increase, and it says 750, and then the final proposed budget says 1.25.
Yes, because we purchased the Fisher's Cove lot at 500.
Oh, okay, I'm confusing the two. Yeah, yeah, okay, fair enough.
Can you tell me, Ken?
Yeah, yeah, one was, they're just two, so we're pledged to the Fourth Street. I was confusing what the five, I thought the 500 that she had in there was for the Fourth Street, but it's for the Fisher's Cove that we already purchased.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
Refresh my memory, please. The pledge for the Fourth Street, going towards that purchase, wasn't that coming out of our, I thought that was coming out of our general operating. No, it was always out of transfer tax?
We had a ruling on that.
Yeah, we have a ruling on it.
Yeah, from Alex.
No, I'm not talking about the recent advice we've received from Alex. I'm talking about what we, when we appropriated last year.
It wasn't budgeted last year.
Yeah, we always anticipated it this year because it was September 12.
And we always thought that we were going to be using transfer tax funds?
I did.
I didn't. Okay.
But it's better news.
Yeah, I think it's opportune because we're over budgeting.
So, but to be clear, we are only pledging $1 million to...
It's right now 750.
750.
They're asking for another 250.
Yes, but this is the FY25 amendment.
250.
Yes, so the remaining 250 is in the draft 26 budget.
So if we approve all of this, what is the balance of FY25 surplus? If we, if we agree to everything here, how much, is there any money left in?
So if we look at the transfer tax, and the end of January, we were at a surplus of $1 million.
Correct.
I think we will still have a surplus. I haven't seen what the transfers were for February yet, but we would have February, and we would have March transfers still coming in. The expenditures in the transfer tax fund would be for a portion of the Ocean View Boulevard project.
Okay, so that's where that could go to. Okay. So would you imagine a second budget amendment to FY25, or you would...
I think this would cover it.
This would cover it?
Yes.
Because, I mean, really, the philosophy is, you have a surplus, spend it, or put it in reserves, if that's the decision. Those are like, really, the two choices, but, but we've gotten clarification on things we can do with the transfer tax, and it's putting a lot towards roads, and also purchasing of land, other activities, resiliency.
Just a theoretical kind of question to help me understand. Right now, we're doing a budget amendment, and you can go in and you can amend the budget after a budget has been formulated.
Correct.
So, that plays into what I've been kind of getting at all along. Some of these big-ticket items that we have that are causing the large increase in this year's budget from this year to next year, we could hold to the side and have budget amendments, because we do have the funds available within the budget to then be able to fund those, as we see how things loosen up and happen across our country.
That's a possibility. I did try to look at the version of the draft budget for '26 a little differently, to show that the increase from '25 to '26, we had a lot of transfers in and out from different funds, but when you take those transfers out, the increase in revenues from '25 to '26 is 10 and 1/2%. The increase in expenditures is 13%. Now, that does take into account...
That's troubling, isn't it?
It's less than what we were showing.
And I bring this up, and I'll, the way I've always stated it is, we've got this vision, and I think our vision is really good, and we've got to get there, but we don't have to get there all in one leap. We could parse this budget through amendments to get to that vision, as we see how things pan out here nationally with the budgets and what's going on with grants and all that sort of thing. Does that make any sense?
It makes sense to me, but, and I appreciate what Councilman Elder is saying, but going back to the whole process we've been going through, for, you know, this is our third meeting and work before that, I'm of the view that we need to focus on a budget, make some hard choices, and move forward. And then, if there are extraordinary, I look at this as extraordinary circumstances. I don't want to have, I don't think anybody wants to have a budget where it's just an ongoing process, where we keep adding budget amendments or doing things, because we have other priorities and other, need to use our bandwidth for other issues. And so this is why we do this, but, I mean, I don't think anybody would disagree if there's a extraordinary situation in Washington or anything else that we may have to make modifications. But I do think it's important that all the time spent by the Finance Committee and the FSS and others, that we do everything we can to get a budget done, and then use that option if...
That would be helpful for staff.
And that's just what I was thinking. Could it be an option if, you know, as we get toward the end of this, we may find some things that we're saying, hey, we'd really like to do this, but, you know, how about we put it off a little bit? But I agree with you, we've got to get this budget, the main part of it sealed.
But this, and I'm not arguing with you all, I just want clarity on this. I think this amendment that's been proposed is for the fiscal year 2025 budget?
It is.
And so it's about us squaring that up and meeting those obligations, correct?
Yes, it is, but it has, but it has a direct impact on the increase that the FY26 has. We all know that. So, so we're doing an amendment, but we're actually lessening the burden in 20, the FY26 budget, because we have a surplus. I mean, I think we all know this. It's just some clarity that these are, I think, what Ellen Lorraine's proposing are the most logical, big-ticket items that we should pay for in our current budget, which relieves our budget we're discussing for FY26 significantly. So we're not at a 20% increase, we're down in the 10s.
I think this is a good strategy.
Right, but that 20% was, that was never really, that was, that was a suggestion very, very early on in the, in the Finance Committee work.
Correct, correct.
No, no, that's, we're shifting an obligation. We made a pledge of 750K.
Yeah.
So it's just about shifting that, again, the burden of, what does that look like? This is your funds, and this year, we have a surplus.
I understand.
We might have a surplus next year in transfer tax.
Correct.
You know?
I think we will.
Hopefully, that will be the case. But in this case, we had, the money's in front of us.
I'm not arguing any of this.
So I think, just for the purpose of this budget, I mean, this item on the agenda, we can all agree, the top part is, I mean, we need to do that, because the grant's there, so it's not even worth debating that amendment.
Right.
So the bottom part, I think we just need to debate, is we want to allocate the full 750 to this year's budget, or is there a number in between? What I propose is, I was thinking that we had made two different tranches, like, we had offered 500 first, and then 250. That's why I thought, maybe we pay our 500 this year, but I'm amenable to the 750. If we're in for that, then we can do...
And you're saying, Ken, just for clarity purposes, paying, the idea of the two payments that you just suggested, 5 and 250, that, would the 5 be from fiscal year 2025?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I thought was, just, we have some surplus, so how much of that do we spend? Again, I'm fine doing this full 750, but the logic of why I said 500, 250 just matched, because, you know, on our time in council was, the first, we gave 500. Last year was 250, they're asking for another 250, but that was my logic there, and just matching the...
And one fell swoop, we could meet the obligation that we have made to the organization.
Sure.
We could, but the 750, we have the funds, so, so why not do the 750?
Right.
Which gives us some more priority, more room in FY26.
In practicality, the settlement is September 15th of this year, and money needs to be in hand by then. There was always thinking, because part of the agreement that the Obisface Alliance has with the Rollins family is a potential six-month extension. But most recent conversations that we've all had with them is, that's likely not to happen. So they're going to need that money, and it's the same issue they're having with money that's coming from foundations, that money needs to be in hand this year.
Right.
So do we need an amendment?
So what we would be approving is an amendment to this current budget that we're under, of allocating another 750 expenditure, which would come from transfer tax. I believe that's the, what we're...
Yeah, motion to approve the proposed...
Yes, I move that we approve the budget amendment for FY25, as detailed by the city manager.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that takes care of Item B. I'll give Ellen Lorraine a minute to jot down, and then we can move to the discussion of the other items there, which is essentially continued discussion of the draft budget. She's provided us a hard copy, for those following along at home, there are hyperlink attachments.
That is correct. So, yes, this is a new version of the draft budget for FY26. And you will see on Page 1, where I previously had mentioned that we had a lot of transfers coming into certain funds, going out of certain funds, and I tried to pull those out and put those in the middle of the page, so that when you're looking at total revenues for all of our funds, the FY26 increase is 10.55%, and expenditures for all funds, the increase And then we can get into the detail on Page 2. We start getting into the detail for the general fund, so again, I did the same thing. I separated the transfers in to the general fund from the transfer tax. And then I identified the transfer out to the resiliency fund from the general fund. So the revenues for the general fund are increasing 20% based upon the proposed revenue adjustments, and expenditures are increasing 29% in the general fund. And you'll see that same setup for each of the funds. So if we were to look at the transfer tax fund on Page 20, I'm sorry, Page 27.
Ellen Lorraine, I have a question about, you said there was, at this point, you were looking at an increased amount of transfer tax money coming in, and it was about $1 million.
For FY25, a surplus as of the end of January.
So we don't know where that will go next year, but, but it seems to be trending that the cost of the homes, even though the sales are going down, the cost of the homes being sold is up.
We have a lot of new homes that are going to be coming online, based upon the estimated 500.
So is there a figure as far as an increase in revenue through that, that you could put on that? Do you have any idea of what percentage that might be, instead of the, the number?
Well, transfer tax, for the next few years, think of it like a bell curve. Because we have increased inventory and higher prices, it is going to go up, it's going to continue to go up, probably another three years, this is what the Finance Committee analyzed, and then they conservatively said it will, may downtick. So they weren't relying on it in like, year four and five, even in the estimate as much. But there's, there's not, there's no data that's going to show a decrease in the next few years, because we have two things going for us. We have the inventory increasing, 400 to 500 homes in the developments we've already approved, who are coming online. Okay, I don't think we're going to see vacant lots. Okay, there's nothing that shows that, and the price of houses is not decreasing.
So my, my point is, it's a great source of revenue that we're getting.
It's huge.
But I don't know at what percentage, you know, we talked about...
Percentage of total budget, Joe, or...
When we talk about our, our revenue, we talk about raising revenue by a certain percentage, all the revenues that we have. If you look at this revenue source alone, is it like 5%? Does it bring in 5% a year of our, in total revenue?
You mean of total budget, of total revenue?
Of our total revenue sources.
Well, we're budgeting $3 million, and our total revenues are 14, 14 and 1/2, over 14 and 1/2.
Right, so 20%.
14, so...
It's 20% plus, just ballpark.
So it's about 20%. So that's a really great thing that we have here in Lewis, and I just wanted to point that out and reiterate that.
It's why, and it's why our operating reserves are as healthy as they are.
Yeah.
But this is why the Finance Committee said, our reserves are healthy, start using that transfer tax funding, so, for resiliency, but most importantly, for roads, like, let's not defer maintenance any longer.
Exactly.
Right? Okay. So it's a very healthy source for several years, but we, obviously, there could be changes, but for the next few years, we're pretty confident that we are.
And in the FY26 budget, yes, we are budgeting 3 million in transfer tax, but we are also estimating a surplus of 900,000 for FY26.
That's, that's amazing.
Because, one, we shifted the obligation of the pledge to 25, so...
Right.
Fortunate.
Extremely, right.
Great, thanks.
And, you know, it was interesting, yesterday at the chamber meeting, because Senator Huxtable was talking about the state budget. They have two reserves, or two rainy day funds, and so it's just like our reserves, you don't, you don't want your reserves to be so high that your tax base says, what's going on?
Well, they say spend, or give me the money back.
They say spend, either give it back, or, right.
People have reached out to me about that.
Either give it back, or start fixing our roads, and do the things you need to do. So you want a savings, you want rainy day and savings, but you don't want it so inflated that you're actually not serving public safety, roads, and all those things.
So we can move into the proposed revenue changes, if that's okay? Discussion on that, continued discussion on that.
By the way, I'm sorry if I missed, did the amendment we just made, is that reflected in this?
That's going to be reflected under the proposed amended FY25.
So this, this budget, this packet that you gave us today?
Yes, I tried to...
Assumes that we...
Yes.
Made that action. Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so under the proposed revenue changes...
Page, please.
Three. Because we're only proposing revenue changes in the general fund. So in this, we have the tax increase being proposed, an increase to the dockage fees at City Dock and Canalfront Park, increasing building permit fees from 1 and 1/2% to 3%. We're also looking at increasing park fees, bonfires, park events. So are there questions about those proposed revenue changes?
Can you remind me, what's the 10% on increased meter revenue based on?
That's being estimated for FY27, possibly considering a metering rate increase.
That's nothing, you're not anticipating...
Nothing for FY26.
No, the Finance Committee took that direction, not to do anything in this one, but they wanted to start plugging in, knowing we probably do something in '27.
Again, we're not acting on that today.
Yes, FY26.
Right. All right. And what about the, let's talk about the building fees associated, proposed here, the doubling, the flat practice of doubling those fees. Is there any science behind that, much less art, related to the idea of just doubling those fees? Is it just because we can?
Comparative to the other communities.
I understand, but if our costs are not the same, or similar to what other communities have, what, what is the purpose for this?
The costs, the costs aren't the same, salaries increase, the, you know, I mean...
I understand, I understand we have those costs, but we also have fixed costs, and are they, are they out of line, or...
I'll let Ellen Lorraine back me up on this, but to answer your question, what we looked at in the, in the FSS, and then the Finance Committee, was, could we look at a development fee, recognizing that new developments, we're welcoming them, they approve them, we approve them, but in fact, they have costs, increased road, trash pickup, all those kinds of things, you know, all the services. So when we went out to look at, how could we apply that to the development fee, we kind of, as we said last Friday, that train left the station. So where could we do it? And where could we do it that it was the, that placement of activity was not on the entire base of the citizenry, but on only those new houses, okay, where you could put the building fee? And then, secondly, where someone was planning for a renovation. So at least it seemed very targeted on those that benefit from it. And then we met with the building planning and building, and they talked about the workload they have, that they're not capturing all of that. So this is why the Finance Committee said, there is an opportunity to, to actually help to underwrite costs of delivering the service, but don't plan on it forever, because the inventory gets built. There will always be renovations in Lewis, as people buy homes, but we're pretty built out, and so there's a window here of just a few years. So we were, the planning and building, and the city manager said, do not think that this is an arc that keeps going up. It will drop and level off unless the city, you know, annexed in something, you know, significant. So it's a, it's probably a three to five-year window, and that's why they were recommending that we put this in.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall during those meetings, there was a lot of, you know, this was discussing various revenue sources, new and existing ones, and I think people were kind of stunned, to use that word, that, wow, we, we charge a, you know, 1 and 1/2% and other communities are nearly double that.
That's right.
So I think that seemed like a reasonable...
Correct.
...increase, because it would just simply bring us in line with...
That's right.
...the community norm.
That's right.
I guess what Tim's getting at, too, though, is the, so, the number looks huge, you know, like, from $1,008, you're essentially, but what does that mean, like, per, is it relatively minor on a per-project basis? For example, does that $1,008 represent 500 product, projects? And does it only affect new construction? I assume it affects all, new roofs, everything, right? So, and then the other would be, you know, if, if it indeed is substantially adding cost to the builder, does that affect what we get on the transfer tax side? Because now, all of a sudden, are people slowing down renovations and such? So that, I think that's a fair point he makes, in terms of, was there consideration of a tipping point of, oh, if we do too much, it will slow down the...
I think that's a fair point. I mean, that's a fair point, we're talking mostly today about revenue sources, right?
Right.
And I think it's a fair point, we'll get to the rental and accommodations tax as well, increases there. I think it's a very fair point to be talking about increasing, keeping up with our needs, but also not, as we've said multiple times, use that term, killing the goose. And nobody wants to create a, a, a tax structure here that actually scares, you know, people away from doing renovations, or scares people from coming here to visit and renting an Airbnb, or staying at a local hotel. So I think, I view today as, these are, these figures have come through a lot of deliberation. They weren't just thrown out there. They, they were, but our role is to understand what our priorities are, in terms of moving, existing and future ones, and are these, are the rates in line with what we need? And that's where I see our role, is understanding, is three too much? You know, should we be...
And that, that's our job.
That's our job, to figure all that out, but I mean, it didn't come out of nowhere. It came from a lot of existing work, starting in September.
I'm not suggesting that it came out of...
No, I'm not saying you are.
I know, I understand, I'm just, thank you very much for your comment. This, this proposed doubling of the fees, or any of these increases that are suggested here, this additional revenue has not been earmarked in any way, has it?
No.
So, so it's not, it's not being collected here, with the idea that it's moving to fund a particular activity, it's just going into the general fund, is that correct?
Except for, except for resiliency, because you could look at that in terms of the gross rental tax, I mean...
I thought that it, I thought that some of it was going back into the building and planning department to help modernize and...
But that goes back to the general fund.
Make them more efficient.
It's all coming out of the general fund. We don't have cost centers in...
Right, okay, right.
Neither does the state, by the way.
No, exactly. And two things I want to say about...
So we benefit to some degree, but that's a good thing.
Oh, we will benefit to, benefit to the departments.
Absolutely.
Two things I want to just raise on, on the building permits, and yes, we did look at other communities. You know, when you buy a house, when you do that transaction, when you're buying a house, you're, you've got a sheet, okay, of a lot of items, and as homeowners, you know, we trust our settlement attorneys on all of those pieces. I don't think that's going to deter anybody from building on the new 400 to 500 houses. Remember, on our renovations, the town is very reasonable and sensible, that you, as the homeowner, put up your estimate of what your renovation value is, and we base our fees on that. Now, the planning department does look at, you know, if you're adding a significant renovation, and you say it's only going to cost $10,000, I mean, they flag those obvious ones, but remember that we rely on the trust of our citizens to say, my renovation is going to... to cost approximately 25,000 or whatever it is. So I believe that we have, I'm not saying in any way that a citizen would have a number that wasn't true, but we allow our citizens a lot of flexibility to assess what our fee is assessed on.
And I'll give you an example. If you and I are doing the same project, but I decide to load my truck up, go to the lumber store, buy all the stuff and do the work myself, I'm gaining the same value in my house as you are, but you had to pay a contractor.
That's right.
So your permit expense is going to be higher. But we're both going to increase the value of our properties.
Correct.
So that can account for some of that as well.
That's right.
Some people sub things out differently to save themselves some money.
Sure.
Which is fair. Yeah, totally.
Yeah.
All right, some of these minor things like the Great Marsh Park rental, is that for the dog park? What is that? Sixty, this is, I'm still on revenues, rental, it says great rental, Great Marsh, it's like 6,500 bucks.
Because that's the agreement we have to rent hunting rights for Great Marsh.
So it's the marsh, it's beyond.
That's what we're collecting from the license, from that license.
Right.
When is that up?
I'd have to get back.
That's another one, I think, like some of these longstanding, kind of like, you know.
I think that's fairly recently renewed. I want to say within the last five years.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, so I don't know if it's like a 10 year or a five year, but.
I think we took, I seem to think that we increased it substantially from what it was, from what it had been.
I think so, but I want to say the term's 20 year.
Okay, could be something like that, right. Another area that is, has given me a slight case of heartburn is the proposed revenue increases associated with our public spaces. And, and I'm speaking about the revenue, it's been suggested that we increase the fees for, for weddings on the beach, that kind of use.
Where, where are you on this?
Page three.
I'm sorry, that's on page four. Isn't that right? Yeah, on page four.
Reservation.
Reservations. And there's also, I believe, I saw in here what page it's on. But you spoke to it earlier, I believe, and it has to do with the fees associated with bonfires on the beach, those kinds of things. And.
So, so you're concerned on the total dollar or your, the increase, what's, where's the, your concern?
Well, the total dollar is attractive. I recognize that.
Of course.
I can, you know, big numbers, I can appreciate. It's how we get there. And I, for me, I think that our fees should somewhat reflect what our costs are. Aside from the fact that public space is being used for this particular activity, it seems that even though we don't follow cost center accounting.
We don't, right.
I understand that too. I think that we should have, it should be based, our fees should be based in what, what our costs actually are for these particular activities.
So, so one of the, and that's, that's a, absolutely a reasonable comment. And also, as you said, if we had like profit centers, like a business might have, you could translate that directly on it. But what the Finance Committee and the FSS looked at, they had a slightly different approach that I think is really, I'm glad you raised this. They were looking at who's burdened. And so they, they really wanted to look at visitors who benefit and we welcome them, but they come and they use our services. So we looked at weddings and we asked specifically, I'll use weddings as an example, how many folks are having weddings? Well, the permits were, I think, 100% were, not people who live in Lewis. So that's the, the philosophy, whether we want to support it or not, of the Finance Committee was, we want to look at some things that where visitors enjoy a safe community with our police, they enjoy our parks. But then bonfires, which actually, I'm amazed how bonfires is like one of the most, the biggest issue, and it was at FSS too, let's get a discount if you're a resident, okay? So that's where they balanced it, like, okay, people who come in, short-term rentals, they have a bonfire, they'll pay for it because they want the experience. But then if our own citizens want to go, they added that as a discount for them, okay? So that they, so we could balance that. So that was the philosophy is, as we look at revenues, can we look at who's paying for those revenues? And can we not put that burden solely on our citizens and our property owners? So that was the philosophy.
But the, and, but the, and using the bonfire fee as an example, and I did not look at this prior to coming into this meeting today, unfortunately, but I did recognize that there was a, if you will, the discount, as you described it, for citizens who want to have that. But it's, the discount does not take it down to what the fee is today, correct? It's still higher than that.
Yes, slightly. Very, very slight increase.
What do you mean citizens? We're talking about property owners.
Property owners, property owners.
Well, not only property owners, but also people who are renting property and residents of the city would benefit from this.
Property owners, but someone who's, let's say a short-term rental on a property, their credit card is their home address, not, okay, so, right.
But what I'm, what I'm trying to suggest is that we do have people who live in our city who are long-term, they rent property for a long-term, for, you know, annual leases and so forth. And they are, they, they vote in our local elections, they vote for council, they vote for BPW, et cetera. And they have those privileges that are extended to them. Would they also qualify for this kind of rental?
Well, if they vote in our elections, then this is their home domicile.
I understand that.
So then, yes, they would get the property discount because.
But they're not property owners, what are you saying?
Then in addition to that, would the property owner who owns the property that is renting that property, would that person also, that party also benefit from the hometown discount?
A property owner that's going to have a bonfire would use their credit card and their address. And if they use their address of Lewis, they would be considered, they'd get the discount.
But Tim is suggesting that if somebody has, owns property here and is a long-term rental, I mean, and they rent it to someone who works at BB Healthcare, and they're not the property owner, they're the tenant, and they decide they want to have it. I don't know if that's a huge amount of people, I don't.
I don't either.
Yeah, and I mean, so I think it's, we would want to know, is that really a impacted group? I mean, if it was me, I would go to the landlord and say, can you get me?
Exactly, yeah.
Can I sign, can I sign up for, you know, a bonfire?
I feel like, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if that's.
I don't think this is like a big issue. I think the way the Finance Committee dealt with it was right, which was, or I would recommend, people who live here get a discount. We don't want to discourage them. The beach is an asset, it's probably why they moved here, one of the main reasons. People who visit, they're not paying for dune replenishment, okay? So, you know, the words, so that's where, that's where the Finance Committee was.
In the future to that, but you might offer like a, just a seasonal, like a one-time hit that allows them just to, when, when a resident wants to have a, a bonfire to do it, you know? Because the reality is, with any of these card type of programs, you probably usually use it once or twice and then you're like, oh, there was a waste of 100.
I'm going to ask one more question about the bonfires specifically. We have a vendor, at least one, I think there may be multiple, who provide bonfire services, I'll call it. Would they be impacted by this fee increase? Is that the?
Yes, it would. They, so we have three, typically three vendors. And it would, it would apply to them as well. They apply on behalf of their customer.
Passing.
Yeah. So it would likely be passed on, the, the cost of the increase would likely be passed on to the customer.
Right. Okay, so one more question, I promised to give this bone up. We had the expectation for the vendors who are providing that service to be responsible for cleaning the beach, restoring the beach after their event. If a, if, if, in the model that we have now before us, where we are residents of the community and visitors would be able to apply for a permit to have their bonfire, are, is the city now taking on the additional responsibility of policing that location where the bonfire was held and making sure that the embers were extinguished, making sure that the logs were, are removed from the site? What, what are, what are we doing here?
We don't have the capacity to, to enforce it. When we see an area that has not been cleaned up, we will clean it up. There is a vendor that operates outs inside the city limits, the other two do not. And that vendor, when is cleaning up their sites, they will clean up other sites.
Right.
But again.
That's goodwill.
That vendor is in the city and, and has a vested interest in the community, so they're going to do that.
Right, and they're extending goodwill, their expense too, for all of us, right.
And I would say that, I mean, I know our family had a bonfire last year for a birthday. Once you've used the vendors, all of them are great, and our one in our city is fantastic, why would you have a bonfire without them? Because that service is, so a little extra fund for that service is phenomenal because it's chairs and umbrellas and tables and cleanup, and it's just this wonderful thing. And other communities don't allow bonfires, as we know, okay? No, they don't allow them, so, so.
Dewey is really the only other one.
Dewey's the only other one, so Rehoboth, you cannot do this. So it is a benefit that we have here, but it is one, again, that could be tweaked. I don't think, I'm, I'm not going to fall on my sword for a bonfire comp, because, you know, it's just, it's pennies on the dollar.
I understand. It's what it represents in my mind.
Right. If we, yes, and if we hadn't done the discount for the property owners, I would be in your camp. I felt like that was the balance that some finance members came up with, so that our, our property owners can still enjoy our beach at very little increase.
And you may could extend that to residents.
Yes.
Who do the long-term lease and property owners.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good addition. I mean, it's, because that's the intent.
Yes.
The intent is, you live here, you're part of our community, so let's, let's give that direction to the city manager. So I think, Councilman Ritzer, your point, you, you gotta, you gotta bite on that bone.
Thanks.
For good reasons. I think it was good you raised it.
Tim, you have a question? Yeah, come on up, Tim, if you have a question. And Blue, you're checking to see if anyone's raising hands online. Okay.
Yeah, I think what you're doing in event, discount for the resident is good, but a question. If a vendor is getting a bonfire license for a resident, do they get the discount?
In my mind, they should.
Under the intent, yeah.
Under the intent, yes.
So we, we do ask the vendors to identify the name of the permit holder and their contact information and address. So if it is a resident that's working through a vendor, we can, we can do that. And we can modify the permit if we need to, but we can do that.
Thank you.
The Great Marsh lease is 10 years.
And it's sort of like six more years?
Until 2031.
Do you have any?
No, not on this issue. No.
And the, okay.
So as a follow-up to yesterday's discussion where we talked about the increase to the GRRT tax for short-term rentals, the lodging tax, Alex is online and can review, again, what was shared yesterday. The recommendations is for the increase in the GRRT for short-term rentals and the lodging tax to become effective 1-1-2026 calendar year. So the city would not realize any revenue from that until FY '27. But to give proper notification, to allow for planning for that, you know, there needs to be a discussion of getting that vault rolling now, so. Do you want Alex to review those recommendations?
Let's take them, any questions on the lodging tax first? Let's just go in order of.
You mean questions, you just, I mean.
Yeah, because I think what we're proposing is the two percent.
Two percent.
So I think we can go up to three. But as Alex mentioned yesterday, why we need to pass the ordinance is because it needs to be specific, so I think.
Sure.
Amy nodded yesterday pretty hard that the budget is based on the two.
Yes.
So I think.
Right, no, I, no, I don't have any questions about the process or anything, but like I referenced earlier, I think ultimately we'll have to have a, you know, a collective argue, you know, this debate and conversation about, you know, how, how high should we go with this and other things? Are we, you know?
We worked really hard to make sure that.
That's all.
There was, it was equitable.
Right.
Between all the rental entities. And so I think, I think a lot of work was done there.
So what, this puts essentially everyone at nine?
Ten.
It puts everyone at ten.
Both at 10, including the state.
Short-term and hotels, basically. And our, for our purposes, long-term rentals are at five.
Remain at five, right.
Now, I still do have an issue, and, and I'm going to bring it up now, I, I think this is where I should bring it up. There is, and, and I know I've, I think I've brought this up before, but there's a whole segment of rentals out there in our community that are not paying a GRT. And those are the businesses that are being rented out. All of the business properties that are rented out to restaurants and different places are not paying a GRT. And I just think that that is not equitable, that I would pay if I rented my home out, you would.
I feel, there's two, there's two ways to look at that. One, I would say, well, I get what he's going, I just want to make a bifurcation though between an owner-operator, someone who's renting, so their, their fiscal play is, is a real estate play, really. They're trying to purchase the property, they run a business, and the tax man allows them to rent to themselves. The other reason that they need to do that is to avoid liability, because you don't want to lose everything of your home because someone falls in your store.
Well, I.
So I think there's two different ways, there's.
Well, I understand that.
That business model versus someone who owns a building and they're renting units to people and collecting passive income there. That, to me, is totally different.
And I think that we need to maybe do an analysis of that, because that may be true in one case, but if I'm a.
It's true in many cases.
If, if I'm a businessman.
Not people who own their property.
And I own a million-dollar property or two or three million-dollar property in the central business district, and I put it in an LLC so I can rent it to myself, it's still a rental.
Yeah.
And that's a profitable situation for them to do that, and a very good tax move.
I'm not.
And why should we not get?
Because otherwise you'll have, you'll have tumbleweeds rolling down Second Street.
I don't believe that.
Because no one, it doesn't make fiscal sense to do it any other way. To, to own the building and have it in your name and to do it, doesn't, it's not fiscally responsible. If you're a business owner that's doing that, it's, it, there's not a lot of, not a lot of wisdom to that.
Can I just hold for a second? Okay. Not to say that we shouldn't have this conversation, but what's in front of us is not that, okay? And I want to be sensitive to.
But what I'm having problems with is voting on this because of that.
Was this ever discussed?
Yes, it was discussed as something to look at in the future. It was discussed by the Finance Committee, but they focused their attention here on making equitable for lodging. But, but absolutely, what Joe's saying is, it was something to say, we should look at that practice, it's not in the FY '26 budget. So I think it's, we have a number of items that the Finance Committee wants to look at. But we didn't want to propose lots of new things that came into the FY '26.
And to my point, I will make my point a little bit stronger. To my point, the city spends a lot of money on making sure that those business areas are in good condition to bring in money. in good condition to bring in money. We've got to pay for that. And the other part of this argument is that, you know, we're looking at a resiliency fund. Couldn't that money be going toward a resiliency fund that we would be bringing in? Why are the tourists paying it and the homeowners are paying it and the cities contributing?
The commercial properties are paying.
Aren't we scraping something off of the meters?
Well.
But, but we're doing the work.
The resiliency fund, to, to go to that just quickly, all, all properties, all properties, residential, commercial, industrial, are a percentage, whether it's a new tax or we take it out a percentage of existing. They do have a play, but your topic, which was discussed, is, is a topic that's being proposed to look at for the FY27 budget.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's not going to come off the table, Joe, that's on the finance.
And I agree, but I think that the, I think that this has been a very, this topic has been, it's, it's not in the light. People don't know that this is going on. And I think if the average citizen knew that they were paying these fees and the businesses were not, they wouldn't be happy about it. We all have to contribute to make things work. No one can get off the hook. It's, it's just civic responsibility, in my opinion.
Look, I, I think, I think Councilperson Marasco, you know.
I get it.
Stayed where we are, and I, and I appreciate what Councilman Elder's saying.
I felt that I had to say it.
Yeah, but I think it is something, you know, they'll look at, but I mean, for our purposes today.
It's not on the FY26 budget.
Yeah, I don't think we can really delve into it now.
Do you think that's something, speaking to what Councilman Elder has raised, do you think that's a topic, a subject that the finance committee will take up during this next, this calendar year?
A hundred percent.
I understand, okay. I just want to make sure.
Hundred percent, it's on the agenda, a hundred percent.
And so a year from now, we, we have the benefit of their recommendations, or their study at least.
Yeah, and you'll see it earlier than that.
By the year's end, actually.
Yes, exactly, by the year end, yes.
Right.
So does anyone, on this topic though, or is everyone good, I guess, with the resolution as proposed by Alex with the 5.5 for short-term and the 2% on the lodging tax?
I'm, you know, as I've stated before, this is not new. I'm, you know, I'm always a little bit skeptical of these, these kind of tax increases because, you know, you, I wonder at what point do we get, do we scare people away? And so I'm not against them per se. I think, you know, we're actually kind of lower than a lot of other communities, for example, in what we collect. But I did see what happened with, with Rehoboth last year when they went to $4 per hour on their parking, which created, that became a tipping point for people down there and people in Lewis, who I've talked to, who like refused to go down there and wait till the offseason because it's, it's ridiculous, $4. So I worry a little bit about going from, for the hotels, they will go from, they pay eight, currently pay 8%, 8% to the state, nothing to the city. Now they'll be paying 2% to the city, so they're, they're going up, you know, 20%. Short-term rentals have always paid 5%, now they're going to pay 5.5%, but they're also paying now 4.5% to the state. So now they're both at 10%. And I understand, I think the, the committee did a really good job of making sure there's equity there, and I think that's a positive thing. Nevertheless, I mean, with short-term rentals and, and listening, knowing that they're a huge part of our, frankly, our economy that come here, I worry that, that, that going from 5 to 10%, basically a dub, doubling of the cost to the landlord, I'm just, which will get passed on.
Mm-hmm.
And I just worry that that may have some chilling effect. And one of the things I wrote down here, and we don't have, we, we won't decide it today, but perhaps one way to do this is to move forward and approve this, but perhaps create a sunset or a, or a designated time next year we review this specifically to see how it is. It won't go into an impact until next year, right? January 1st of 2026?
1-26, we'll start.
So maybe then following year, you know, we make a point similar to what we did with the, the parking on Savannah Road where Councilwoman Marasco said, hey, let's have a six-month debt, you know, point with, with our city manager to make sure we connect with Eldon. Something similar to that. The hard thing to do, the hardcore legal thing would do to be, actually create a sunset. A lesser version would be to create a commitment that we're going to look at and find out how, how that impacted. Again, it would only be one season's sample.
But I think, I think it's a terrific idea that, that we charge the finance committee, you know, in addition to what Councilman Elder said, don't forget to look at this commercial potential tax. I think we should, the finance committee has done their biggest heavy lift. Now what they need to do is monitor that. So whatever we decide on, so I, I take that recommendation seriously to say, finance committee, watch this. Has, have, and the Rehoboth parking model is a perfect example. Have we pushed the envelope too far in certain places and there's a negative impact from that? So I think we should charge the finance committee, like we charge the planning commission. We look at your ordinances, okay? If they're not doing what you intended, I think that's the same thing. The finance committee didn't go to the maximum, and because we had the chamber as part of our member for FSS.
Right.
We balanced the equity fairness across the different types of lodging, but also the slowness to roll it out. Those were the two key elements that we, we reacted to very seriously.
That's why I sort of echo Councilperson Saliva where I'm not ever comfortable raising rates, but I think the approach that you took in making sure the two offerings were that, because that's what we heard, right?
That's right.
It was, oh, let's be equitable. And we also heard, don't do it to us this year because we need time to react to our rate cards. So I think you showed, you demonstrated that you listened to both of those.
No, I think, I think that was, that's why I'm, you know, I'm always suggesting, because I think the committee did a really good job and explored this. And we can keep exploring this for years, but I mean, I think there was thoughtful debate about this and, and a reasonable resolution. I just, and I'm not, I know Rehoboth hasn't reduced their, their rate, their $4. I'm, I have no, if this work, doesn't work out, or it works out, I have no problem, you know, saying, hey, let's fix this. We made a mistake, we went too far. There's nothing, I don't, I'm happy to do that.
Absolutely.
I know other communities will not do that.
Yeah.
They, you know, because it, it's a rate that's in effect, it's getting more money, even though people, it may have economic impact.
Yeah.
Exactly.
The organization becomes dependent upon that funding.
Exactly.
They draw on it, right? They plan on it.
That's right.
We're in a fortunate position that we have some excess funds coming in that we can moderate these things if we see that they're not working. And with the committee continuously looking at this, we're in a great situation.
And the scrutiny, the responsibility of the council going forward, for, you know, councils in the future is to do exactly what we're doing, and that is to scrutinize the proposed budget.
Exactly.
I know it's painful, it's very tedious, it's time-consuming, but this is really meeting the language, the terms of our charter. This is what we are supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
But I agree with Councilman Saliva's suggestion, I think it's a good suggestion that.
It's noted, yeah.
We task the, we assign that responsibility to the finance committee and in.
Yeah.
2027, that would be, I think, right?
It'd be fiscal 2027.
That we would have a report.
But what I would do, Ashley, thank you for being here, because Ashley helps me on the agenda, let's put this on the April 15th finance committee, if that's fine with you, agenda, the feedback from council on the, on some things that they're responsible for, that way it's not lost.
Right, it's memorized.
Exactly.
At this point, are you asking for a motion on this issue?
It doesn't require.
Well, not yet.
We did, the only action item was to, was the first item that we took, the rest of it is just discussion today.
Yeah, but I want to, I do want to just mention overall, one other thing that I think potentially might be getting lost, but it was in Ellen Lorraine's management memo that she sent out with the budget. What, the finance committee wanted to really make sure that we protected our reserves, but that we didn't keep adding to them because they had the confidence that they were pretty healthy. However, when you look at out-years, of which we are not reviewing or, or voting on, you see that unless things change.
Yeah.
We're dipping into those. So that was one of the reasons why they looked at the revenues to say, let's get some revenues up and moving so we can mitigate or minimize the amount of out-year going into the operating reserve. Okay? So I just want to say that we have to be careful about that. If we cut too many of the revenue sources, we are actually putting ourselves in a very different direction.
Correct.
As responsible via the charter of our, our fiduciary responsibilities.
Did you say you're having your, your finance committee meeting on?
April, on Tax Day.
On Tax Day.
Of course, we thought that was the best way to start.
I was like, wow, okay, I'm going to put you in that.
Exactly. We, we can all remember it, that's what we decided. But we do have quarterly, yes. And the finance committee will start meeting on a, on a quarterly basis now, they were doing, you know.
Right.
On steroids for the fall.
So to Joe, to follow up on Joe's question, so these two that we just talked about, the lodging GRRT, will that, should we expect that on our March?
We can add it to that.
Agenda to activate then?
Well, what we've typically done is scheduled a public hearing.
Good point, yeah, yeah.
So we can put that on the March agenda to schedule a public hearing to review both of these.
Okay. Good action, okay. So then let's move to the resiliency fund draft, and it, it's still marked 2.1, is that?
2.1, no changes, thank you very much.
Okay, so, to, to that end then, so there's no, there's no changes that have been made to this draft. I think we did.
I'm sorry.
You guys, luckily for you guys, we held off discussing this yesterday.
Yeah.
Because we only had, Joe had, Joe had the leaf, he wasn't having well either. So I figure with a lame.
I was feeling well, I just had.
No, no, you were, Joe wasn't.
Joe was sick.
I figured with a lame duck mayor and two, you know, lack of account for him, it was good to wait for you guys.
That's good governance, yeah.
So we really had no discussion on this last, yesterday. So I don't know how we want to go about whether there's already, have there already been, has anyone raised anything?
The only, the only comment that I saw from the public, there was one comment from Bob Heffernan, which is now, was incorporated in 2.1.
Yeah, I did see that, okay.
Okay, because that was, just if you haven't had a chance to look at it, that was his experience, I think it was working in Pittsburgh. He wanted to make sure that the resiliency fund could also be used for post-weather events. He has witnessed in communities where you have a terrible flood and everybody's putting out mattresses and other items, and the city didn't prepare itself for all of that cleanup of trucks, removal.
That would be post-disaster cleanup of waste and damaged materials for residents and commercial properties.
Exactly, yes, so that was included in.
I saw that on here, what page was that?
That was one of the things that I looked at also, and.
It's on one of the project examples.
To just allocate a small discretionary portion, maybe 5% to 10% of the fund for emerging resiliency needs to allow for adaptive decision-making. And that would include things like you're speaking of.
Right. I just wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend earmarking anything more.
Percentage.
I would, remember that allocation of the resiliency fund is always done at this table. Okay? So we might have a terrible storm and say, we need to do X, whatever that, what that is.
And the guardrail still remains in place of a supermajority.
That's right. And I did get some, I did get feedback from, because, because I had committed to the finance committee as well, because they were uncomfortable without seeing a document. They just had the early, early drafts. I just want to echo that the finance committee was, had many comments about the lockbox. So you saw increased language on the lockbox of, the, the city manager can't really borrow against it, you know? In other words, we really put in some additional language in the policy statement to protect the fund. So to protect the fund from future councils, but one of the things that you also see in the action of things that we need to do to get it set up, a future council, Alex was describing this to me, even though we have the supermajority, a future council by a simple majority could negate our approach.
Right.
So long-term, and I did talk to Senator Huxtable about this yesterday, a charter amendment going forward this year to protect that lockbox, supermajority feel, is something that he will work with us on. That was Alex's recommendation, you know, we, we're laying out something, but somebody.
We can't, we can't, yeah, it means nothing without the charter being amended.
Yeah, it, it means something while we're on council.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But future, and I don't think even a future council would go into the resiliency fund, but when that resiliency fund is 20 million, like, when it gets to be a bigger number, they're going to be tempted, I mean.
Yeah, and I was going to get into that piece where the request of funds, and, and I don't know if you've kicked this around, but for lower amounts, it's lowering the supermajority. So if, if you want to allocate 5K for an engineering study and one guy's not bought in, those minor amounts, maybe you can, I guess you could, then you run the risk of death by a thousand cuts.
That's what I would.
And then on this flip side, if you were going to go over, to your point, let's say it gets to a certain amount, if you want to go over 5 billion, going beyond the supermajority and saying it needs to, allocations of over seven figures need, you know.
That's right.
Unanimous.
Unanimous consent or something like that.
That's why, on page four, the last bullet under ongoing management, after five years, the access amount may be reset by council.
Okay.
So what I'm trying to, to do is keep it, keep it, oh, let me describe it this way. I think our resiliency fund is going to be active, so again, this is unlike the old view of a resiliency fund. This is about, let's start doing things now to protect ourselves. So where the old resiliency fund said, okay, or the concept was maybe at about 500,000 a year, get it up over time, leave it alone, it's going to be there. What we're, what I'm proposing here is, let's have a vibrant fund. So right now, if we want to do something like the, for Street Forest, the open space, do we want to consider that as resiliency? Do we want to look at Blockhouse Pond and consider what was being proposed as resiliency? So it may be a little more active than I think was initially envisioned.
I think it'll be a lot more active.
Right? But then it's doing what the purpose of it is, right?
Well, and, and one of the things that I wanted to bring up, and I understand how it's set up, and, and I think it's important to have this, but when we're looking at the notion of community involvement transparency, our plan emphasizes community engagement, but does not gives, specify how residents and stakeholders will participate in decision-making. And the potential issue here is, without public oversight, fund allocation could be influenced by political or special interest considerations. Recommendations establish a resiliency fund advisory board, a lot of them have advisory boards, with local residents, business owners, climate scientists, and, and emergency management experts. So they create a public entity to help manage this along with the city council. That prevents the city council from rating it.
Different skill sets.
And.
Yep.
This is one of the things that I was just recently reading a lot about, that, that I, I don't see how that would create, hurt, but like, we're talking about the Fourth Street Park. Well, some people might think that that's presumptuous of us to even consider spending resiliency money on the Fourth Street Park. So how do we prevent us from allocating those emergency funds in a super vote when the public might not agree with us? I, I think that transparency.
There's, there's two, there's two ways to look at that, though, is, once you establish this fund and people elect you into this seat, they're giving, they're putting their faith behind you that, that.
Yeah.
That's why they've elected you, you make that decision.
I understood, yeah.
And I, I don't think there's anything wrong with, I, I like what you're, where you're going with this, though, is, which is getting a feel before, before, again, maybe it's a certain amount is allocated, is that you have a, a public opportunity to, to get their opinions, because no one wants to operate in a vacuum.
I like the, I like where you're going, but I think what the mayor's just said, we're elected to represent, but I do like the idea of, except for a disaster, okay, which is timeliness is needed, and you don't want committees and commissions. But when it's an allocation of going forward, why not have a public hearing or, or, or have a, have identified people in the community from, who have the science and the engineering, in addition to our consulting engineer, weigh in or, like in a workshop, give us feedback.
And maybe you limit that to the proactive measures, to your point, because if, if you have a reactive measure, at that point, you just need a supermajority and you need to start making stuff happen.
But I like the thoughtful, because, you know, I've been looking at, what are some of the smaller scale, so for example, what's happening on the floodgates on, on Cedar?[1750.66] So for example, what's happening on the floodgates on Cedar, okay, that is a resiliency project, okay? And so our part of that is, is the grant match, but there can be some smaller things we could do, and so I'd like to have a list of those and things that, that we could do.
Well, and that was one of my points also.
And nature-based.
Clarity of project prioritization. The plan includes a broad range of projects, but lacks a transparent framework for prioritization. Potential issues, without clear selection criteria, high-visibility projects, example, seawalls may be favored over more cost-effective but less viable solutions, example, stormwater management improvements. So the recommendation would be to develop a scoring system to rank projects based upon risk reduction, potential, cost-effectiveness, and alignment with climate projections and hazard models.
I mean, I understand where Councilman Eldred was coming from, trying to put guardrails around this and stuff. I mean, we have that for our infrastructure, we have the pavement index and stuff. I'm not sure there's even any kind of data like that out there.
Well, they're doing it in some places.
Well, I mean, they might be doing it somewhere where there's a huge community that, you know, I'm just saying, I think we have, we have guardrails already here about this. I don't, I wouldn't, I don't think anybody here would ever feel comfortable spending a million dollars on a project without having a public hearing.
That's right.
And I think we would do that, and I respect what you're saying, you're looking to make sure there's more engagement, and I think we, we're going to do that, if we don't do that, we're going to get kicked out of office.
That's right.
You know, and I, and I understand that piece of it, but I mean, again, we have four.
Can we take that vote now, please?
We have like a supermajority.
Yeah, exactly, and I think.
At $850,000.
Right.
You know, you can't just spend it all.
But I think what Joe, I think what Joe might be getting at too is, in the future, when you build up that fund, you're starting to use it for proactive measures, it's similar to what GMB does, which is, hey, here's an idea, you know, like, you could, you guys have 800K in interest now available in the fund.
Right.
And a proactive measure could be it, maybe, I was thinking just, maybe that's an offshoot of the environmental subcommittee, is they, they, in the future, become this.
And maybe to merge with the finance committee.
Well, they could certainly consult.
A finance environmental.
Well, someone should do some homework on this and get, you know, and bring a proposal for it, because I have zero problem, but, but making, you know, making sure people feel like they have a voice.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, let's, you know.
And I don't want you to think that I'm against it, because I'm very much for it, I'm just, you asked us to critique it.
No, it's good, it's good, and you're, and you're in the, I mean, I'm assuming you're very positive and supportive, so you're into the implementation questions, which are real. I like the concept that the environmental subcommittee, through support with the consulting engineer, because the environmental subcommittee only has a few scientists on it?
Yeah.
Okay, pardon me?
The environmental subcommittee is not a standing.
Well, you know, it's kind of like we score the grants.
Yeah.
We have a scoring system for the grant system we came up with. It's very easy to set up a scoring system for the projects that you do.
Another, so I think we could come up with a variety of models, I mean, another model would be, we'd go to our consulting engineer, and we would say to our consulting engineer, actually, I think that's cleaner.
And that's the reality, is what's going to happen is in the future, that it'll be part of the budget items.
That's right.
In the future, become a fund, then Ellen Raines will say, hey, X amount is coming out of the resiliency fund this year for proactive measures.
That's right, exactly.
That's like how it will work.
Yeah.
May I turn to, raise one question that I have had, and this has been kind of a burr in my saddle for a while, and it speaks to the, the seat money and the, the suggestion that 100% of the Chesapeake utility funds, that is, these are the monies that have come from the franchise fees, would be applied and used for this, the resiliency fund. And my question is, has to do with, first of all, the allocation, 100% allocation of those dollars to the resiliency fund, I have a general question, a problem with that, a question. But then I also have, I'm speaking about the fairness associated with the fund, those $300,000 that have been collected, and I'm mindful of the fact that Chesapeake is, has a presence in the city, they are a franchisee, but a small portion of our community actually receives the benefits of their services. And yet, those customers who are patronizing Chesapeake have, they're the ones who actually have made this $300,000 available to the city coffers. And so my question is, is, we as a community, as a council, we as a community have not had a discussion about how we want to use those funds? And are we satisfied that 100% allocation of those $300,000, that this is the best way for those dollars to be spent?
I'll speak to that, so I am one of those payers, and I appreciate you sticking up for me as one of those payers, but I think the idea of this resiliency fund is to, is indeed becoming more resilient. And so part of that might be shoring up our utilities in the future, through undergrounding and things like that. So it's an appropriate source in that mind, and maybe we ought to also include our attachment fees or other things that we're getting through, you know, our own infrastructure, so that might be another approach. Rather than saying exclude this, to say that plus tower attachments or whatever fees we might be getting, but I see the logic in it, I do appreciate just your attitude of, oh, not everyone pays into this, so it's not really, you know. I think the other benefit that by having Chesapeake as one of those funding sources is, they're a big corporation, so maybe in the future, if they know that we're seeding our resiliency fund through that, they might be open to a goodwill gesture of saying, hey, we're, we're a community partner, and
Exactly.
here's an injection into your resiliency fund.
It could be, the Finance Committee. And I think that the Finance, the Finance Committee had a couple of objectives here. One, it, it saw the need to kickstart the fund, so that you didn't have a fund, you didn't have enough revenue in for two to three years. We, we saw the need to get the fund up, and so we looked at the Chesapeake Fund as one that was sitting reasonably idle. We did look at a percentage of the BPW franchise fee, that was one, that was on the table. We pulled it, not to say it couldn't go back in, but we pulled it, because that right now goes into, that's just under a million dollars. That goes into our operating fund, so we just thought, you know what, we're not going to do that yet, because there's so many issues up in the air, and so that might be needed for other things. So that's why we pulled back, so we weren't, I don't want you to think we were singling out just Chesapeake.
Well, it kind of feels that way.
It doesn't feel that way, okay, well, it was sitting idle, that's why.
And I understand it was sitting idle, I guess, did you all, did the committee discuss taking any percentage of the BPW?
Yes, yes.
And, and they chose not to touch it?
Not to touch it, because it was an active part of how the city manager is managing through the operating fund. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to put handcuffs on her. We did, I want to say, on the transfer tax fund, our original recommendation, up until maybe 48 hours before we finalized, was 750,000 out of the transfer tax. We brought that down, thinking council might need other needs, as we just have been discussed. We brought that down to 375, but there was conversation at the Finance Committee that should we have a healthy surplus at the end of this budget, the one we're looking at, the Finance Committee would come back to the table and say, if you have a surplus, again, we like, like you to put a percentage of that back into the resiliency fund, but we decided that you needed, you needed more flexibility, we didn't want to.
Can you remind me, what's, what's the amount from the transfer tax that's going in there?
You mean of the initial?
Yeah.
375,000.
375, okay. So again, this is another, I'm going to throw this out there just as a, you know, it's a similar idea as I had on the.
Oh, you could, I knew where you were going.
So the shell game here that I'm proposing is, Forest Street has asked us for another 250, okay? We've paid our initial 750 out of this, rather than seeding the full 375 here, could we give 250 to the final trough there and 125 into this? And you're essentially saying it's a, it's a resiliency payment.
They're both resiliency payments.
But that's, but that way, we're not, we're able to eliminate 250K from the budget, you know, from the budget by essentially making it the same thing.
Okay, so, good idea, but what we could also do is, yes, but, but remember that we still have two more months of transfer tax. Okay, so, so I hear you, and I think it's a good idea, I also would then want to say, protecting the resiliency fund, we have two more months of transfer tax coming in, so I would, I would agree with what you're recommending, and then in that two more months, I would put that money back into the resiliency fund. In other words, yes, I think it's a really good idea going forward to go ahead, in a sense, prepay the Forest Street out of. What I'm saying is, it's not so much of a shell game, it's that the money is still rolling in, and so I would want the resiliency fund to get its money back in, because we already came down from 750 to 375, so.
So you halved it, yours, you're at 370, their initial proposal was 750.
Because we could see how much the, you know, there was a million dollars we could already see in the transfer tax that wasn't being allocated. Now, we have allocated some other things for that, so I'm just saying, I'd want to go back in, and you can always do one time, you have windfalls that happen, and so you can always say, in our windfalls, should we put that towards roads, should we put it towards public safety, should we put it toward resiliency?
So, think about this, and I know that I'm going to mix apples and oranges here, but we're, we're buying, we're putting money into Forest Street, there, we've been asked for another 250. Likewise, that could be considered a resiliency project, we need to fund that too. We've got this excess money, why aren't we pre-funding it to lower the budget, rather than taking it out in next year? We have the excess funds now.
Is the 250 in the budget, by the way?
The 250 is in FY '26.
So why don't we take it out, put it in 25 and pay it?
Well, that's why, we haven't committed, that's why I think we're in that page, that's why I'm just kind of suggesting this as a way of, you know, helping both sources under the same, and under the idea that it meets the criteria.
For resiliency.
And it's an initial sort of demonstration of what it would go to, kind of.
Well, it definitely meets the criteria for resiliency, I mean, open space, preservation, and, and a big part of the, of the design of the 29 acres is a huge drainage area.
Correct.
I'm going to use this opportunity to remind us all that we, no, 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 it's all good. That we still are waiting to receive all the documents from the seller of that property, so that we can do our due diligence in preparation of the idea of us settling the property's being settled.
What do you expect?
Well, remember, we talked about this months ago, where you were going to speak to the, I think it was the GLF or, you know, and they've done apparently some studies and of the property and so forth, and we, and we were supposed to be getting those documents, so.
There's been a multi, I mean, what, I recall this vaguely, but what, we've done surveys, we've done, you know, appraisals, we've done, you know, groundwater studies.
And all that kind of, those documents.
But why do we need to see that?
Because it would become our responsibility, once settlement takes place, and we don't know what those studies, what the reports are, what the benefit of those studies are.
Well, I'm sorry, I can, maybe I dropped the ball there.
Appreciate getting that.
But I can tell you that, you know, there is really, this, you're not going to see anything that's, you know, any toxic water or anything like that, but we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Well, how about that idea of maybe shifting some things around? And it, what that does is, that would really just lower the increase of this year's budget to next year, which is a nice thing. We'd still be funding everything, that 250 is part of, could go toward the resiliency fund. We're trying to get more money in the resiliency fund anyway, so we'd buy and pay automatically out of the resiliency fund. It would be our first, maybe first project, so we show that it works, and.
So Ellen, so Ellen Raines, when we close out, when we actually close the books, which is probably in, like, June, okay? And if you have a surplus from the prior year, does that surplus automatically go into operating reserves? Or does it go to the general fund?
It depends on the fund that the surplus is in.
Okay, okay, so if we have trans, let's use transfer tax, because that's going to be the biggest. So where would the transfer tax go, if in June, when you close the FY '25 books, where would you normally book, where would you post it?
It's going to stay in transfer tax.
Okay, so, the important part of that is, so when she closes the books, which is several months after the year ends, should we have an additional amount of funds, which I think we will, in the transfer tax? We can make the, and should we decide to do the, a lot of ifs, decide to do the 250,000 for the Forest Street? Just do it in June, okay, meets the deadline for the recipient, all right? I know it doesn't reduce the FY '26 budget, but remember, it's carryover, in a sense, from the FY '25, because it, the transfer tax would, that additional funding would sit in the transfer tax reserve, and we can allocate it, okay? So it doesn't, it's still in the FY '26 budget, but it would really be funded from prior transfer tax. It gets to where you want.
Let me know if I understand.
Well, say, when you, when you close, when you close your year, it takes you about three months to close a year, okay? Because you have to tick and tie everything. So in June, the city manager could come to us and say, FY '25 is now closed, and we have, we were fortunate. It's a plus year, we have some extra money. Let's say we had $300,000 left over. We then, on council, could say, put that to the resiliency fund and pay the $250,000 commitment to the Forest Street. So it is FY '25 money, but she won't know that, she can't, she can't know the final numbers until June.
I, I think I'd probably think that's not a bad idea, I don't know how the others feel. But if we're going to do it, we might as well do it to our advantage and use the systems we're setting up to fund it.
So basically, what we could commit to, I think, Alex, if you're still on, we could, it's like a pledge priority?
He put it on mute when I mentioned shell game.
So not, just striking that from the record, so, so we could, can we vote, Alex, on a future potential pledge? In other words, to protect the commitment to the Forest Street, we could say, should there be a surplus from FY '25, our highest priority of that surplus would be to allocate it towards our pledge for the Forest Street Forest. That way, we're not.
You can do that, that would be sensible, just an intention to do that, not a binding commitment to do that, would be the way to go.
Okay, that way we would protect that instead of it coming from some other place. But you don't, you're not going to know that, you don't know your final numbers, never, you never do, until about a quarter after.
And, and what's really nice about this is, the city is, is, is standing up to its commitments to handle infrastructure. I mean, we've got major projects in the works, and things are really turning around in that area. And so with this excess, it makes this move a lot easier to do, yeah.
So with that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would keep the proposal of the 375 for the one-time investment of the transfer tax to the resiliency fund, and then protect the 250 in a June conversation with FY '25 money.
So at the end of the, end of, after that payment, then, you'll have how much left in the resiliency fund?
Well, you have to.
375.
No, 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 we've got.
Fully funded for the year.
Yes, fully funded for the year, so, because there are lots of, all the other bullets on annual funding are a part of it, okay? But one of the compromises that I thought we came up with on Friday was, well, how do you fund it if you don't know those numbers? Like, let's just take a percentage of parking meters, so Ellen Raines is going to take the FY '25 actuals, and that's how she's funding. So there's going to be a fund balance conversation in the fall again.
Should we put that conversation on our calendar?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. May I ask a question regarding, on page two, the examples of projects that are bulleted here?
Yep.
I agree.
Do you imagine, or will you, will it, do you imagine that the committee will be seeking input from council to establish some of those projects?
To establish them or set the priority, what do you mean establish?
Well, to suggest that the projects be studied or considered by the, by the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee would just be looking at the money, okay? But I think what you're saying is, yes, we, we on council could say to GMB, we'd like to have a mixture of nature-based solutions and, and, and let's call them hardscape, okay? That would be like physical things, and we'd like, for knowing Louis, we would, I would recommend that we would ask GMB to come forward with, here are the top five projects that you should be, we should be looking at. In other words, getting some science and engineering to lay out some of that for us.
Right, well, I guess there are two things I'd like to mention, first of all, when I went through the bullets, and I know these are just examples, okay, strictly examples that were set forth, there were several that I noted, the first and third one, for example, I believe that those have already, they're, those are already in place, we have a floodgate project.
We do, but we don't, we have not, we have. We do, but we don't, we have not, we have committed to a match, but we have not written a check.
I understand that, but we've made that commitment.
Yes. You did when you got the, you did that a couple of years ago when you went after the FEMA grant.
Right, exactly. So I consider that a, it's booked, so to speak. It might not be, you know, the check hasn't been cut, but we are committed to funding that project because it's a back grant.
You're committed to funding it, but you don't have it.
I mean, costs.
We don't have any costs and it's not in anybody. Okay.
I, but we do, I thought that GMB had, had applied for a grant for that project.
Design.
And that there was, I thought we had received confirmation that the, the, the grant application had been well-received and was gonna be funded. Am I mistaken?
I don't think it's been funded, but we can confirm with Charlie. I think we have cost, an estimated cost, but they needed design done first.
Can we ask Andrew, do you know the latest on?
Do you know that, anything about that, Andrew?
I do not have.
Okay. Roughly, our commitment ballpark, that's about a four million dollar project ballpark, and it's about a twenty percent commitment for us. But you're not seeing it anywhere. And given what's going on in FEMA, they could pull.
I understand that.
We all know that. So you don't see it anywhere?
Right. And that project might not go anywhere.
That's correct. That's correct.
Exactly.
Right.
And the other, and I believe it was Councilman Elder who spoke to this. And it's something that you and I have spoken about in the past and shared a, a shared vision for. And that is the idea of, of converting our overhead facilities, utilities to underground and bearing those costs.
Mm-hmm.
Because they will be very real costs. And yet, they very much are about improving resiliency.
That's, exactly. That, that, that's something that's not on there, I believe.
I think we should add it for version three. I think it should be listed.
Right. And we, and we did it on Second Street years ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we, we have an opportunity with the Fourth Street project coming up.
We do have it with Fourth Street. And we also, I mean.
You have experience in this as well.
I have a lot of experience in this.
In Virginia.
In Virginia.
And I do too.
And you do too. You have lots, you have lots of that. And also, when you look at our subdivision ordinances, they have to underground utilities.
That's correct.
So in other words, we are the new ones. So we already are, we already are doing resilient things. We're now gonna label those.
Right.
They were smart, and now they're viewed in the resilient world. But I think.
This is one that, you know, as the fund builds up, and BPW had this discussion, Barbara Curtis brought it up. And it, there was, it gave some good discussion about whether this was a good opportunity to underground the utilities. The issue here became, the design is already.
Correct.
Done. So it became, so to your point, once the plan builds up, this now becomes an opportunity to get out in front of those projects.
That's right.
And that becomes, I guess, what, what that would suggest is that as we are, we are expecting GMB to prepare shovel-ready projects, that that is always one of the boxes that is checked.
I think so.
And if there are overhead utilities in that area, that they do some design work to, and cost estimating for what it would take to convert to underground.
Yeah, I think that should be just.
It has to be part of the.
That's, that probably is a good conversation for the joint, next joint BPW meeting because that's obviously a shared effort there. Because one of the things that Josh was talking about is, as you know, is, again, you have to, you can't, it's not like you can put your water sewer and your telco and your electric together so that, you know, there does need to be.
Right. It's coordination.
Is three-phase.
Yeah.
Harder to underground than regular electric?
No, it's not harder at all.
Okay.
There's construction methods, they're used by the industry, and that's how it's accomplished.
But I think we should add it, again, these are just examples that we've noted. But I think we should add that one because that is one that is, is resilient and we have lots of citizens talking about it.
And we have a lot of exposure.
And we have tremendous exposure. So that's a good addition.
Good point.
So Andrew.
I was gonna ask you, what do you think our, our.
Next step, sir?
Next step should be for this instrument?
Well, I think we should, I think we should pass the resolution of which Alex has drafted a resolution, right?
Attached to the agenda.
It's attached to the agenda because that allows, that's taken the policy to a resolution. And then.
That resolution doesn't, I'm sorry to interrupt, does not specify the seed money, does it?
Correct. Alex.
It incorporates.
It does specify the seed money. The resolution itself is rather simple, but it simply establishes the fund. It does not call for a specific charter amendment, which would be a separate resolution in the future if that's the direction council wants to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think we should go to that next step. Not now, but I think we should be doing that, the charter amendment.
So would we?
Thank you.
When would we vote on this?
Right now?
Right now. Right now.
But it's not actionable.
Well, there's no action today.
There's no action. We can put it on March ten.
We could put it on the March ten.
Oh, we can't. It's resolution, okay.
The resolution is included in the packet that Ashley.
I read.
Oh.
I know we couldn't really had action on B one.
Right. That was the only actionable item. Okay.
Right.
So it was my thought that on March tenth, we could approve the budget and then approve, we could approve the resolution for that also on the tenth. And we would set the public hearing dates for the lodging tax and the GRRT.
Makes sense.
So we would approve the budget in, at the March tenth, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So we probably don't need another budget meeting unless there's something else.
I think I'm maybe missing something. So we approve the budget on, on March tenth. And then, oh, we're scheduling, I'm sorry, we're scheduling the, the public hearings because they will not be implemented until next year.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct, for the lodging tax.
So there's no real rush on those public hearings, right?
There is, in the sense that we need to let the public know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I mean, it's not like we're trying to schedule those within thirty days of.
No, but we want it, no, there's not a emergency to do it. But part of the negotiated agreement was to make this final so that the hotel industry could.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not suggesting we put it off for six months or anything like that. No.
And I think we should leave next meeting, next week's meeting on the calendar.
Yeah.
Even if it's just come, let the people, because, you know, there might be still folks that weren't able to come today that wanna give one last bite before we, because Monday we won't, that, the tenth, I should say, we're not gonna be taking any comment at that point.
Correct.
So I do think that we should at least.
So we could have a broad, continued discussion.
Final, we'll call it final discussion on, you know, whatever you wanna call it, it's revenues and expenditures.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. But treating, but treating it more that we've done our work unless, you know, we wanna, it's really giving the public another.
Give the public one chance to say, you know, or come with some final wisdom, pearls of wisdom, most, you know, oh, that's more what we're looking for.
Pearls.
Pearls.
So, okay. So we've, we've essentially had our discussion on two and three, right? Like, yeah, okay.
And I'm gonna make that one change to the, so it'll be, Ashley, it'll be version three of the resiliency fund document. And it will add underground utilities as a sample project. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Anyone online that's raising their little yellow hands?
Yes, do next week.
No, I don't see any. Okay.
Well, some time during.
So we are gonna, if anyone's online that wanted to make a comment, please raise your hand. I'll make a call now to the room. Going once. Give another second to anyone to raise their virtual hands. And then we'll go to Mr. Shoal.
I just wanna be, be clear on what you did with the amendment, the.
You tell us. No, I'm just kidding.
So the amendment that you approved earlier for, for twenty twenty-five. So basically, you're paying for that.
We're paying our commitment.
Your commitment out of the twenty-five budget, not twenty-six.
Correct.
So, okay, I just wanna.
Yeah, that's.
We made the commitment in twenty-five.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, in some ways, like, I think it was done, one, because we can, you know, the